I would like to call to order this regular board meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners for the month of June 2020. And our first item of business is to suspend our remote attendance rules and allow remote attendance by all commissioners. Based on the governor's executive order, is there a motion to do that?
I moved to temporarily suspend the Urbana Park District's remote attendance policy pursuant to state executive order 2020-39, which suspends the remote attendance requirements of the Open Meetings Act through June 27, 2020. Allow all commissioners to attend this meeting remotely.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the matter? Okay, this requires a roll call vote. I'm going to go by order of seniority, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
I believe Nancy is still not with us, so I too vote aye. So, but four commissioners currently on the line, that is approved. Next item of business is to accept the agenda for the evening. It's, and I'm not aware of any desire to change the agenda. Is there a motion to accept it as presented?
I move we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Again, a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
And I too vote aye, which now brings us to public comment. And I have never made a statement to start a UPD board meeting and feel compelled to do so by the events of recent weeks. While I am proud that the park district has proactive outreach to the underserved and underrepresented of our community, we must be clear eyed that despite some real bright spots, our success has been less than we had hoped for, less than is needed, and there is a long way to go. We as an organization truly believe in our "you belong here" motto, but believing it is not enough. Consistently achieving true inclusion in practice, both for the citizens we serve and our employees, is an ongoing challenge. We have made mistakes and had failures along the way, and we must not let that deter us from continually working to make the UPD a welcome in place for everyone. When we say you belong here, we want it to encompass everyone. We must keep working until we achieve that. And having said that, Tim, is there any indication of anyone of the public wishing to come forward to address the board as well?
I don't have anybody on computer or text or know of anybody that was joining us, unless there's anybody in the waiting room.
There's one member, there's one individual in our meeting right now that I don't recognize the name of. But I didn't make any announcement about how to participate remotely, so if Claire O'Brien would like to make public comment, if you could go to the participants tab or the reactions tab and raise your hand. If you'd like to make a public comment, then we can unmute you to, to do so. Or if you'd like, Michael, I can unmute that individual just to make sure they don't have public comment.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead and unmute the person.
I don't have any public comment.
Thank you. All right.
All right, so as I understand it, there are no new staff introductions, so we are moving on to item four, appointments to the 2021 UpDeck class.
Hi, um, so this, the, the information is in your packet. There are several, several documents. The first one, just to cover memo, um, hang on just a minute, there we go, that, you know, kind of outlines who our two applicants are. And it summarizes the current status of UpDeck. I mean, this, several years, we brought on more UpDeck members, and so we're at a full 20 members on the UpDeck committee right now, the advisory committee. And seven of them are going to be rolling off this year with the, with the two applicants that we have. If we appoint them, that would bring us up to 15 members. I still am looking with the park district as a whole is still looking for some additional applicants, but at this point, the two that you see listed in the memo are the two that we feel we can bring forward to be considered for appointment to UpDeck. Um, the, the map that you see included with the packet also, as we've done for the last several years, highlights the addresses of the individuals serving on UpDeck, so we can get a representation of where they live within the community. And there's also two actual applications that have been completed. One by Gary and one by Ashley that give some background on the two individuals and why they have an interest in serving on UpDeck. In addition, one of our current members, Kay Holly, has submitted a letter of support for Gary's application, since she had been talking to him and, and really felt that he was a very good applicant to be considered. With that, I'm willing to answer questions or, you know, any, give you any additional information that I have on the two applicants.
I have a quick question. Um, so I'm looking at the, the UpDeck board currently, and there are several people that represent one, you know, one or the other particular park, like four representatives for Carl and five for, for Larson. I'm just kind of curious, I mean, we revisit this over and over about representation for all parks in Urbana. And, you know, what, I know we self nominate, I mean, they have self nominees that, you know, put their names in the hat, but I'm just curious about the intentional effort of reaching out to other people that live around surrounding parks of the other four parks that are not represented.
Well, um, we do, staff do work with a wide range of people in the community, and I know staff are encouraged to ask individuals that they work and come in contact with, that they have an interest in applying. We continually put the information out at events and, you know, places where the public interacts with us and, you know, people, I, I know I've talked to many people who say, oh, that sounds interesting, and they consider it. But when, when it comes to actually filling out the application and submitting it, they don't. And, you know, I, I think one of the biggest things that we can do is invite people to apply for UpDeck, which we continually try and do. But since self nominating or, or applying seems to be the hurdle, I, I'm not sure what else we can do. We, we need to continually invite people. We work at it. We might have to investigate doing more with neighborhood listservs, although we've had good success doing that in the past. But if you have any suggestions of what's, what to do, I mean, we certainly are always open to new ways to contact people.
Two things I wanted to mention and add to, typically I visit with the Suna Neighborhood Group, and we always have our, or have had our summer event in the Q and A neighborhood. So those two neighborhood associations, we've had access direct ask. Usually we pick up people in those ways. Maybe there's an opportunity for us to begin targeting neighborhoods or areas of town or park zones that we don't traditionally get a lot of response, where we maybe go door to door and leave flyers. You know, it could be a measure of a lot of things, could be still not aware, still not, you know, knowing about the opportunity. Then there's maybe the positive side of asking people, actually reaching out and trying to do an ask. So I think that, those are things that we could try, that I don't know if we've directly kind of gone door to door with a, let's say, an area campaign to try to, you know, identify people that would, even if they wanted to learn more. Maybe it's, you know, would you like to know more about it without a commitment, just a way to build a bridge, you know, to make those connections.
Is there a listserv for, I mean, we don't, we have nobody north of 150, right?
Right.
Right. So is there, is there, are there listservs for any of those neighborhoods up there? Do we know?
I don't know. I'm not aware of it, but we could find out.
Yeah, I mean, I know that Leslie, whose last name at the moment I can't think of, the one, the Pauline Terrarium Leslie.
Yeah.
Leslie Dean.
Yeah, yeah, she would be a good person to find out how to contact neighbors near Crystal Lake. LaShonda, do you, do you know, um, well, are, are there people who live around Ambucks?
There's a, the, what I call kind of the Hickory Street neighborhood area. There's a small, small neighborhood right there next to the park.
Yeah, I guess that's right. Yeah, yeah.
You know, that would be an area, for example, you know, where you could try to fly or at least get someone to maybe come to learn more or direct them to a information site.
Right, because that triangle incorporates 45 and 150 and 74 has Dog Park, Chief Schumacher, and Ambucks.
Then there's a couple of subdivisions that are out of the district, you know, Edgewood and Scottswood. So there are sort of what I call existing neighborhoods, but a few of them are in and out of the city.
Yeah, I really think we have to think differently about how we're recruiting UpDeck participants. And so I even think if there was a way for people to test, test it out to, invitations for people to join the meeting, I think probably it's hard to understand what the ask is if you've never participated. And, and just, I mean, if you have the opportunity to attend a meeting and listen and learn, then maybe you're, you're interested. Maybe you're like, too much of a commitment for me to do this monthly, but might know somebody else, right? Most of this is word of, word of mouth is the best, but, I mean, we have overrepresentation from West Urbana, West, and, and East Urbana for, for various reasons.
And we thought that for your, for your, LaShonda, do you have any suggestions?
I was sitting here thinking, I mean, what about our aldermen of different wards? I mean, maybe they are, work closely with neighbors within
That's a good idea.
Their neighborhoods. I mean, maybe they have a couple of people in mind that they could recommend, you know, to even attend a meeting, or maybe we can kind of bet, or do it in some kind of way.
How about the school, because the school district is set up on wards too, right? Aren't they still?
Yes.
I think so.
Yeah, so.
We, we can do that. We've had some success off and on periodically with having city council alderman, you know, direct people our way. We've had a couple of, of successful applicants over the years, so that's a good one to maybe focus a little more on.
And have we sent information out to save the last five years of UpDeck, just to remind, to remind them? Okay, so that's, that ground has been.
Yeah, the, the, I have, I keep that UpDeck alumni email list. And I send, I send out to them and, and ask, you know, at this time of year, starting in January, I send them, you know, just say, hey, it's time for new UpDeck consideration, and, you know, if you have someone or know someone, you know, please forward the information. And again, I've, I've had three current and former UpDeck who have given me names of individuals, and I follow up with them and send them an application, and they just don't submit it. It, you know, it just never
Yeah, yeah.
Comes back.
Another idea could be to, you know, we could certainly have a program through UpDeck, meaning, you know, talk about how do we find new members, ask for ideas.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
What haven't we done? You know, we, we love ideas and we think of a lot of good things, but, you know, group dynamics work. Somebody might have a, you know, so that, that could be a way where we do more outreach within our group.
It isn't going to do us much good this year, since we're not having neighborhood nights, but could we work on making, essentially making announcements? You know, pretty much every time we have something in the neighborhood or the, you know, the lunchtime concerts at Crystal Lake, all those kinds of things, strawberry jam, so that we, so that we reach a wider, a wider audience, so that we're there reminding people so that they hear about it oftener.
Yeah, we, we will do that periodically. We'll have UpDeck information at the park district tables. Often, well, not often, but we've had UpDeck members come and help us, you know, sit at the table and talk to their neighbors when they've had their own part, their, their park event.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, that's been successful. We've gotten, over the last seven years, we've gotten five UpDeck members that way. I mean, that's how, you know, that's how we've gotten.
Stage, then everybody's going to hear. Not everybody's going to walk by the table and say, oh, well, this looks like I should stop and, and look at this. Because a lot of people come plunk down in their chairs, listen to the music and go home and not wander around.
That, that's true.
Yeah.
So I guess I have a question, and maybe you all can help me understand why we struggle with King Park, considering the fact that we have a 25-year-long celebration every year with Jettie Rhodes Day in King Park, that we don't have, we seem to struggle with representation from that neighborhood as well. It seems like there's a disconnect between the work that we're doing on a one-off annual basis in terms of ongoing. This could be my own personal ignorance, but it seems like that would, there, there could be a natural connection there of regular UpDeck participation, because we have relationships through this event. That's how I would look at it from that, from where I sit, but please.
Yep.
If I were to think of, if I were to think of three resources where we might be able to find people, one would be the principals of certain schools know who their power people are with, parents are that, that are involved within the school. PTOs are, are a great resource. And frankly, clergy in some, in some parts of the community have an enormous amount of clout and knowledge of, of their, of their folks. I, I know I have recruited, when I was involved with a, a project many years ago, I just went to a number of African-American pastors and said, who, who from your congregation would be somebody that would tell you what to do? And they said, oh, well, I'll tell you the people who tell me what to do, and, and it was very, it was very helpful. So I, those are, anyway, the, I think we need to look for people who are already knowledgeable about, about their, their part of the community.
Yeah, you know, maybe what LaShonda and I could do would be to go back over the list and, and, and just, you know, LaShonda, from your time, and maybe we could work two or three years past that, just send out messages from you and me, since they know, they know us, and say, you know, we're having, we're having difficulty. We have, we've got, not got any representation, because in those, in that time, we had, we had a number of people from, from north of, from north of university. And it, it, I don't know, what do you think, LaShonda?
I don't mind doing that with you, Nancy. I, I just also feel that, I mean, the length of time that we've also been talking about this, and really trying to get additional representation from those areas. I mean, from the entire organization, including us, just being really intentional about the effort and making sure that, you know, if we initiate that process, are we the ones that are following through with everything? Or is there a representative from the park district that is willing to follow up with the people that we speak with? Or how do we streamline that?
Well, if, if anybody has contacted someone and wants me to follow up with them, I always do. If I have their contact information, I've hand-delivered applications before. I've sent them by email. I just need to have their contact information, and I will follow up.
If I may interject, I mean, back in the old, old days, we never, we did not require people to apply, and that was not the hurdle. It was a little daunting, but we ended up with nominations that got screened by the board, and then we would call the applicant straight out, rather than ask them to fill out an application. And I'm wondering, in some of these circumstances where a name has been put forward, that sounds interesting, and that, you know, the, the, the connection seems good there. It wouldn't be worth even going to the extent of having a board member call, rather than, say, email or even hand-deliver an application and say, you know, fill us out. We'd be interested in having you. It's a little different to have somebody call up and say, you, your name has been put forward by so and so. And, 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 and we'd be really interested in your viewpoints, and if you'd be willing to serve on this, and, and explain a little bit one-on-one of what might be involved in the service. I, I'm not sure we want to go back to the old system where everybody got that kind of call. That, that didn't work so well. It, that petered out in the end, but I think that doing a hybrid, where some of them are self-nominated and some we, we pull on a little harder, might help the situation.
But I think it's getting the names that's the, that's really the crunch. That's the hard part.
Well, yeah, although, although Ellen says she occasionally gets names, and then they don't fill out the application. Well, maybe we need to.
Names, then I think, I think we should, I think we should call. Now, I think that's an important, important way to go at it.
Another option I think staff could do is start talking to some of our local organizations and clubs. They're all looking for leaders and members and commission members. How do they do it? Do they have groups? Who would they recommend? You know, kind of networking? Think Roger's point about trying to get in, connected with people that are connected. That's probably where you might find people. The other comment I want to make, I still think there's pockets of neighborhoods and areas in Urbana that traditionally just, we haven't had any responses. And maybe we start to target some of those neighborhoods in a way that's really trying to attract and bring new people to us. I can think of north of I-74, there's a couple of neighborhoods up there. We've never had anybody serve, but I not much outreach, you know, either. So that may be an opportunity for us to, you know, go into new areas and try to make a presence, you know, to get some, get some, turn over a few stones, see what we could find.
Well, and that could have a benefit, not just for, look at the UpDeck nominations, but I mean, that's part of, we, we keep talking about the underserved and underrepresented. Well,
Sure.
Okay, how many of those are from those neighborhoods?
Right. Likewise, we, staff's always thinking about our foundation now too, you know. You never know who you'd meet. That might be a future candidate for, you know, serving in another area too. So I, I see a lot of value with that.
I was going to say, maybe just kind of listening to Meredith's question, I think, I think with the Jettie Rhodes Day event, the, the, all the, the people that helped with that event, they do a lot for that event, and so I think they probably feel that's their, the, what they can handle from a workload standpoint. You know, I'm thinking of Lehrman Neighborhood Area, Tommy. I mean, he would be good too, but I think he's so overwhelmed with the L-NAC group.
Right, right.
So it's trying to find some of those areas where we have someone who's really gung ho and wants to be involved, but yet they're not doing too much already and don't have the time.
To the gung ho people and say, who do you think would be good?
Right.
Because then, then you're, then you're beginning to sort of develop that next layer of people who aren't already probably totally overcommitted, and, and have, they then have more of a chance to get, to get in and do things, and they're, they're not thinking, I don't think I can take on one more.
And what's interesting, Nancy, is kind of the irony of it is, we're really trying to look for anybody, everybody. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
You don't need to be involved in 10 things. If you just want to know more about parks and recreation, you'd be an ideal candidate, you know, assuming they would be willing to come and serve and, you know, do the few things that we, we need.
Well.
This may be, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, I mean, we're always continually, you know, rather than, um, having a window that we accept applications, I, I mean, I'm talking to people year-round, and I'm ta, I'm promoting the idea of service on UpDeck year-round. And, you know, it, um, there's always interest. I really do talk to people who say, oh, that sounds really interesting. But then when they, when they say, but I'm already doing, you know, this with my kids, and I'm on, you know, you know, we participate in programs, I'm working, I've got this and that, and, and they almost like talk themselves out of it at times when they start thinking about all the things that they're doing. And, you know, I think it's a fine line, like Corky said, you, you know, people who are really gung ho and excited and doing all kinds of stuff sometimes feel they can't fit one more thing in, and, you know, there's, there, you have to find the sweet spot to find those people who really want to be involved and feel like they can do it and make a commitment. And nobody wants to make a commitment and then not be able to follow through, you know, and they're afraid of that as well, so.
Yeah.
But Eric, did you have?
Oh, yeah.
I was just thinking about other examples where we saw public input and had challenges. Sometimes offering an incentive has been useful for focus groups. I don't know if we'd want to consider doing an incentive of some sort, program, a free program or something.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm open to anything as well, because I think that there's enough value in UpDeck that, you know, that would be, that'd be, that'd be a good thing to consider. Maybe leadership team, we could brainstorm some ideas of what might be appropriate as an incentive, you know, for, for people to serve on UpDeck.
I understand it's a slippery slope too. You want people to do it because they're really interested, not because they're going to get a swim pass, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think, I think there's a, there's an opportunity at this point in history where we, we are really looking to broaden ownership of, of, of organizations and, and of, of, of the structure in, in our nation. And I think that a lot of people don't understand that they own the park district, that it's their park district, that it's not mine, it's not staff's, it's not whatever. And I, I, I wonder if we could have an owners' meeting or, or a series of owners' meetings or whatever to talk about what it means to own a park district. I don't know, throwing it out.
That's an interesting idea. I think, I think we're caught up now because it's, it's, you know, we're all behind masks six feet apart, and people aren't going to be so willing to come out. Maybe what we need to do is kind of struggle along for a little bit, but start laying our, our plans now and start putting out feelers now, so that next year, or whenever along, we can get people, we get, we get them in.
And I, to me, we got to have multiple lines in the water. I don't think we can rely on a single pipeline.
I agree.
Oh, absolutely. There should be multiple avenues of, you know, invitation to find people and bring them into, into the, the committee. Because I, I think one, it's not one size fits all when you're asking somebody to volunteer and serve and, and be a part of this. I think we have to, to think outside the box sometimes, so I'm always thinking and looking at it. I'm, I'm open to trying new, new things all the time.
So, it seems like yours, the kickoff is August, right?
Correct.
Because the memo had said, you know, new, new names could, will come in July, but in fact, we have until August to submit new names, so we have two months. So I think it would really be great if we could, you know, outline what our strategy, you know, is in the next two months and, and how we're going to try and attack this, if you will. And, you know, to fill five spots as best we can with better representation within the parks, you know, the areas that we've listed, the, I mean, four neighborhood park areas that don't have representation. We have five spots, so it would be great to, you know, to see at least half those are three quarters, all, all of those filled, but three quarters of those filled with new people from these areas. I recognize that might be a little bit difficult, but I think it's, it's something that we should be aspiring to do.
Absolutely. We might not be successful, but it's, we should It, we might not be successful, but it's, we should do our best to try and, and see, see how successful we can be and then build on that for next year, you know? Maybe if we try some new things and then we try them again. And, you know, I, I think, like I said, it's not always a one size fits all. We have to, we have to figure out how best to approach people, make them feel welcome, invite them to come in and, and, you know, get, get involved, for sure.
Lashonda, how did you end up on Up Deck? I don't even remember.
Did you just wander in and say, hey, you got a chair for me?
I was at a UCAT meeting and she approached me.
Yeah.
We were at the UCAT meeting and she approached me and we began having conversation. And that's how I began to get involved. But I, I also, I was sitting here thinking as I was listening to everyone is, you know, also, you know, Ellen, I listened to you talk about, um, you know, finding ways to approach people. I think we just approach people with an open mind. I think that if there's a, a, you know, kind of like raise it fundraising is, is trying to streamline how to get people to gravitate to something that is of interest. So whether it be demographically, you know, in speaking, so, um, you know, whether it's combining it with a sport or something within that particular neighborhood that someone can actually speak on. I think you would be surprised that, you know, you can have an open dialogue with people to get them to, you know, find out more about the parks and engage with them that they will be willing to serve.
Are we, do we have, Lashonda, do you and I and whoever else have an Up Deck meeting this next week?
Next Wednesday.
Yeah. Okay, so maybe that's something that we need to talk about more at that. And then we can pass things-
Be a topic, yeah.
We can, we can just alert everybody else to some of the ideas that we've had and, and, um, in, in that meeting. And we can get started in that little way. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Well, a lot of good ideas there. At the same time, shall we go ahead and approve the two that have come forward? I think, I think that would be a good idea. I hope everybody else is on board with that notion.
Yeah, I move approval of those two people. Gary Am, Gary Ambler and Ashley, somebody or another. Ashley, Ashley, I gotta find her on my page here.
Ashley Price.
Price, great.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the point? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And I believe that carried unanimously. I don't think there were any nays. What voices left to be nays? So, alrighty, we got two new Up Deck members coming onto the class. Can we now move on to the Up Deck report, which we had in writing? Are there any comments or questions on that report?
It was a good meeting and I think that people, a number of them there didn't have much of an idea of what the splash program was about. So I thought it was extraordinarily educational. And we had a lot of talk about the geese at the end. And unless people were unwilling to speak up, which I wouldn't guess they had been, judging by how the meetings go, there was no one in opposition to our current plan.
Any other questions or comments? All right, let's move on then to our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda for this evening is approval of the minutes of the May 5th board study session, the May 12th regular board meeting, action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, receipt of the monthly departmental reports, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, approval of ordinance 2020-08 authorizing the disposal, disposal or sale of personal property of the district. And that is the entirety of the consent agendas that's been put forth today. It is the purview of any single commissioner to remove any or all of these items from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Is there anybody wanting to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing no indication of that, is there someone willing to make a motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items in an omnibus fashion?
Don't move.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded and under our consent agenda rules, there's to be no discussion at this point. So we'll begin a roll call vote with Roger.
Uh, aye.
Lashonda. Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, and that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. And that brings us to our financial reports for the evening.
Hello, sorry. I'm gonna share my screen so I can bring the reports up for everyone to be able to see. Can you all see the screen?
Yep.
Okay, cool. I don't know why that's doing that, but. Okay, so we are, oh my, I messed something up. How about now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. We're one month into our fiscal year and I, I'll say this again when you guys receive the draft of the budget appropriation ordinance, but our budget that's in this column this year is really more of an appropriation than a budget. The appropriation side of our budget and appropriation ordinance is the legal side of it and it's the maximum that we're allowed to spend. And that's kind of where we're at this year because everything is so unknown at this point because of the COVID pandemic. But that said, so we're gonna be focusing a lot more on projections and forecasting this year rather than our budget. You know, our budget's usually quite accurate and is a good plan of where we expect to be at the end of the year, but not so much this year. So Corky and Derek and Tim and I have been working on a memo to go out to staff and we're gonna be working really hard in the month of June on those forecasts now that everybody's kind of back in the swing of work and with phase three, going into phase three. So we should have some idea and be able to run some reporting on that information as early as July. But I expect to be able to bring some more concrete projections and forecasting to you guys in August. So with that said, I'll go ahead and jump, jump into where we're at with this first month of the fiscal year under our belts. I was actually, when I ran these reports, a little bit surprised that we still, even with COVID, made $58,000 of earned revenues in F, in FY21, just in this month. And so I did a little digging and I thought I'd tell you guys a little bit about what that was composed of. $28,000 of it was a payment from the Urbana School District for last year's splash program that was received, that was billed to them in March, but they didn't pay the bill in April like they're, like we asked. So that really was related to FY20 expenditures. $10,000 of it was for UIC memberships that are still ongoing and we're extending those memberships out once the pool reopens. About $10,000 of it is dog park memberships for the portion of the year that falls into FY21. And around 5,000 of it is our garden programs. So basically, all of the programs that are still ongoing and running are bringing in some revenues. So that was encouraging. And the way that our accounting system works is if somebody pays for something in FY20, like a annual dog park membership, for example, the portion of that membership that is for May through December, if it was a, if it was a 12-month membership from January through December, is that, that, that entire amount gets dumped into the budget on May 1st. So that's why you see kind of a spike right at the beginning, but we may see fees go flat now for June and July until we really start ramping up our program again. So I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of insights on that. It's also not very common that you'd see a negative number in our revenue section. This is because we do interest accruals at the end of the fiscal year. So what that means is that there is a CD outstanding at the end of the fiscal year where we're gonna receive the entire interest amount in FY21, but a portion of that interest was earned in FY20. So we go ahead and recognize that with a manual journal entry in FY20 and then we reverse it back out with a negative entry in FY21. And that way, when the revenue does come, the full amount of that revenue will be recognized and this negative amount keeps it from being doubled. So I hope that kind of makes sense. I tried to explain that. But that's just a journal entry to make sure that the end of our fiscal year is properly recognizing all revenues that were earned in that year. And it's only something that we do at the end of the fiscal year. We don't do that on a month-to-month basis the rest of the year. So with all of that background information, it's really, you know, we don't have a whole lot going on. So our total revenues for the district were $96,853. We actually received our first property tax disbursement on Monday, June 1st. And that, that was good. Normally, we would have received it the last week of May. It just was a little bit delayed. So last year it was very delayed and we didn't receive it till almost the end of June. So I'm really glad. It seems to be on track now. It's just maybe just a tweak later than historically. For our expenditures, we've had $342,000 of expenditures and the other sources is a transfer in from the Personal Property Tax Replacement Fund for total expenditures of $363,000. And we have a net deficit at the end of May of $245,000. And that's also pretty unusual for us. Normally, we're bringing in fees, a lot of fees in May as our camps are ramping up and we almost never would have a deficit at the end of May. But obviously, our property taxes hadn't come yet either and they would have made up for this. So we're gonna see a big change to these end figures and when we get to June. In the capital improvements fund, we had total revenue, uh, we had total revenues of negative $18,000. And again, this is the interest accruals because we have several CDs out in the capital improvements fund, primarily the CDs that we have are a laddered CD schedule for the big bonds that we have issued. So all of those accruals have been booked and that's why you have negative revenue here. We had total expenditures in FY21 of $45,000 and a net deficit of $23,000 in the capital improvements fund. And when you add both of those pages together, we have a net deficit for the district of $268,000 and an ending fund balance at the end of May of 14 million. And after that, you can kind of browse through the individual working funds. This is the dog park revenue that I referenced earlier. If you get down to the recreation fund, this is the primary, primarily the splash program that I was talking about. And then the garden program you can see in the museum fund is around almost $6,000. And then UIC had membership revenue. So that's where all of those fees are adding up, but every fund has a deficit this month, which is, like I said, unusual, but not unexpected. With that, if, are there any questions? I'm happy to answer any. No?
Yep.
Okay, great. Well, then I'm gonna move on to the treasurer's report. Ah, I'm having some issues. And I somehow closed it.
Great.
Sorry. There we go. So this is the treasurer's report for May 31st, 2020. It represents the amount of cash that the district had on one day, May 31st. And it breaks down by each bank account that we have our funds invested in and it's also broken down by fund. We have total dollars on hand of $15,172,715.84. We try to keep as much of our funds invested in interest-bearing accounts as possible. So of that 15 million, we had almost 14 million of it invested. And we've, I've seen interest rates, rates just tanked over the last month. I know, you know, it just, it took like maybe a month or two to catch up to us. And now I'm seeing in the money market account, I mean, they dropped almost an entire percentage. The money market account and Illinois funds dropped quite a bit too. So I was backing away from investing, reinvesting a lot of our CDs and I was keeping them more in the money, money market accounts and Illinois funds just because I wasn't sure about liquidity needs with lack of fees coming in and, and not knowing about the property tax schedule this year with the change in the county treasurer. So we don't have nearly as many CDs outstanding and most of those funds are, are in either Illinois funds, Chase Savings or in the Park Pool Money Market Account. And normally I, I would reinvest them into these CDs, but the CD rates are terrible too. So, you know, we've been here before, 2008 through 12. So it's not something that, you know, we're not used to not having great interest rates, but we, we did enjoy them there for a short time. There was a change in inter-fund loans this period. The recreation fund is loaning the indoor pool $25,000 during the month of May. And that's primarily because we haven't received the payment from the school district yet for their share of the operating of the pool. We won't usually, we don't usually receive that till the first week of July. And because the indoor pool's not bringing in any fees to offset its own expenditures, the pool needs cash to continue paying its bills. So this loan will be immediately repaid as soon as the school district's payment comes in, in early July. But I do expect it to increase in June, probably, you know, to 50 or 75,000, whatever it needs to, to keep paying the bills. So I just want to bring that to your attention. And finally, the vendor payments for the month of May totaled to 491,000. And this included all payments made that cash out the door that was paid in May, which includes bills that were paid related to April expenses and May expenses for the two fiscal years. Anybody have any questions about the treasurer's report?
I move, we accept the treasurer's report for audit.
Second. You're muted, Michael.
Sorry about that. That has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions on the issue? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It has to be real.
Opposed? But it has to be real call. Oh, thank you. I thought we normally did that voice vote by mistake. Doing a roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Lashonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote as, aye as well, so that carries unanimously.
Yeah, that was, uh, that new remote attendance law that's getting passed requires all votes to be roll call votes. So Kelsey went ahead and incorporated that into the annotated agenda for this time.
Okay. We did a couple of voice, we did a couple of voice votes here this evening. We'll have to be more careful about that in the future then. Although maybe this will be lifted by then.
We can only hope. With that, I will breeze through the areas in the capital budget where there was activity this period and there was very little, so this shouldn't take too long. But I want to draw your attention that there may be activity in the April 30th column as well as in the May 31st column and the activity is highlighted with an asterix. So anywhere that you see an asterix is where there was some sort of expenditures during the period. So there was no activity in the Series 2019A bonds at all. In the 2020 bonds, we were, we had a hazard tree removed at Meadowbrook Park that hit this budget and the 2019 budget as well. It was split between the two. Sorry, I want to make sure I didn't miss any there. Scrolling down on the 2019 budget, again, we had hazard tree removal. This was the other half of that expenditure. There was also a payment made for the rock rifles in Crystal Lake. In the twenty eighteen budget. We allocated some contingency dollars. Towards the Weber Port Park portion of the Perkins Road Restoration Project. It was a. Change order for some additional services that were on the Weber Park side of the the park, and so we paid for that out of contingency rather than from their. The sanitary district's contributions. And there was also a three hundred dollar museum grant application fee for the improvements that were. Applying for for the Nature Center that I think we reviewed at the last meeting. There was only a small amount of activity in the twenty seventeen budget related to Crystal Lake Park improvements and also in the twenty sixteen budget, just a teeny tiny bit. And with that, I think Andy and Derek may have some updates for you on capital projects.
Can't hear Andy. Can anyone hear Andy?
Nobody doesn't sound good.
Hey, Andy.
Documents completed. Let me try to be. Can you hear me better now?
No.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, a little better, a little better without the video.
I'll keep going. Someone stop me if I'm breaking up. We have a couple more permit items need to be completed. And had a pre-construction meeting last week. Historical review from the Army Corps should finish sometime this week and would allow work to begin. Around the large pavilion. And that includes the new path, the replacement of the small pavilion. Playground site work and that family game area. By the end of this month or potentially early July, a lot of the shoreline work will be ready to start. And in the next week or so, we're going to start to distribute flyers to the neighbors of Crystal Lake Park. Help provide more information by yard signs within the park as well. And Mark is working on some webs, a web story and some social media information to help get the word out before a lot of that construction activity begins. You guys still hearing me? Okay?
Not too bad.
A little distorted.
When we're if you're leafleting the area around Crystal Lake Park, why don't you put a little mention of up deck on it? Can't hurt.
Good idea.
Hey. Sarah, we can do that. The saline project saying Crystal Lake Park. We're hopeful to have a. Final ID in our IGA amendment to the board this month. And that would include the additional funding from the US Fish and Wildlife. And allow a transfer of those funds for the additional stream habitat work and landscaping. Our staff and Matt Deering finished our report into the review and we're basically waiting at the time for the final approval of the state. Prior to us bringing it before the board, hopefully in July. And a quick update on some pool projects. We entered into a contract with Mid Illinois Concrete. To excavate and place the poles for three new aid structures, the outdoor pool. More anticipating them to be delivered anytime they were ordered in April. And once we have those structures delivered and installed, we'll have Keith York from our staff. Begin to build the new customer service kiosk at the bottom of the ramp. Leading to the recreation pool. We had talked previously as well of the CO two buffer system. Both pools, we've reached final design on that. And approval of that design from the school district as well. Need system replacements need permitting from Illinois Department of Public Health. And that was delivered two or three weeks ago and we are a bit notified that that process is taking a little bit longer than normal. As with a lot of things right now going through the state. But we'll begin to solicit some proposals on that work and be ready for installation. Once we receive that permit, which I would assume would probably be sometime in. Like July or August. The project for the CO two can be completed while the pools are open. So we don't have to do any sort of shutdown if that pushes back any further. That kind of brings me to the domestic hot water replacement at the indoor pool. Due to the what looks to be our bid timeline and potentially opening the indoor pool in late July, we're going to hold off. On bidding that work until our next regularly scheduled shutdown. Probably try to bid it this winter and have plenty of time for our contractor to be ready if we have any sort of other closures at the indoor. Or just be ready for the next normal shutdown period next summer. I'll stop there. Hopefully it wasn't breaking up too bad, but I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Was there any of what Andy reported to you all that you couldn't hear? I'm pretty familiar with it all and I could help translate if there any unclear on. Okay, probably the thing you broke up most on was the saline project and we do have an IGA coming to you all. This is for the additional money that Fish and Wildlife is bringing to the project for the additional rock structures that will be going in the saline. And some of the habitat restoration work along its bank, so that will come to you all next month.
I'll try a call in.
Thanks, Andy. Michael, I think you're muted.
Okay, is that everything for the financial report? Okay, then let's move on to the Executive Director's report.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Yes, as Katie mentioned, I did want to let folks know that the Illinois Senate Bill twenty one thirty five was passed along with the remote. Attendance to do for the COVID period, so that's why you'll notice the roll call votes. Obviously, there's probably multiple reasons, but. Transparency and making sure public can understand who votes on what issues. Obviously, if that's lifted, we'd go back to our previous when we meet in person and follow those approaches. Next is just update on our COVID nineteen situation. Obviously, people are coming back to work. We're starting to pick up new work. Rec staff's looking at programs that we can offer and different ideas that might be new and different. We've got work going on at facilities that are trying to, you know, get ready. For example, the Indoor Aquatic Center. You know, if things keep progressing along, we get to stage four, there might be some ability to re-engage. With a limited number of, you know, access, so we're anticipating that will happen. Likely, I should mention, we could move backwards and so we're prepared either way, but we're trying to really gear it gear up to get everyone ready for. A summer, even though if it's different. Sculpture update, some good news. I had talked with Ivy Guard. That's Ron Guard, one of our sculptors that passed away about a year and a half. That his works exhibited at Meadowbrook. To find out what the family wanted to do with the artwork, Ron had verbally told me he would donate it to the Park District. Obviously, in between, he passed. We never got that arranged or and writing, so started working with Ron's sister at the beginning. And followed up with conversation this week with his wife or end of last week. And she's more than happy to donate it for the, you know, tax value at its list price to the district. So Ellen is working on it, a document to send off to her.
Which piece is it, Tim?
It is position one. So if you come into the Wondell Garden on the east side, just over the bridge, turn left, it's the large stainless steel. Abstract piece of the ballet dancer. As part of that discussion, we had talked about relocating it to the Phillips Rec Center, obviously with the art. Focus and the dance, we thought that might be an interest. We talked with Janet and Corky. They shared it with staff and staff thought it would be an appropriate piece. So when our current piece leaves, I believe, I'm not sure, we'll have to double check, but it should fit the pad that we have already poured there. And that would be a nice addition. Again, our goal is to ultimately have artwork in every park. These are ways we can do it when we get pieces donated that don't necessarily have to always stay at Meadowbrook, whether they're rotated or moved or. Shared could be an opportunity for us, so we'd like to thank their family. It'll be a wonderful addition. We also have some new sculpture work coming that's in the works, the Art and Culture Matrix. We'll be getting together to review the submissions. And we'll look at locations and see how how soon we can do some of that work. We've been limited due to the essential work only, and so we're trying to appropriately find a way to work that back in. And the last update is we had a donation come through to purchase. Molecular Reflection, Chris Martin's piece, which has been in the garden for a very long time, one of our original pieces. And so we're working out the sales agreement with her. It's under review. Matt prepared something and Ellen and I and Katie continue to work on that. Hope to have it and should see it on the July Board Meeting Agenda. So we've got some neat things coming. Update on the Wondell Council Ring. I think we had our final design meeting with Jeff Wondell and I think we're ready to go to construction. It's very likely the trees will be planted first. There are oaks and they need to be dug and planted in the spring. So you may notice some trees that might pop up out in in that area over across from the bridge entrance. But we hope to get the project agreement signed soon and hopefully move into construction, yet still this year and this season. Another update, the twenty nineteen twenty twenty audit. Work is starting. I've already had my interview, so those that get your annual calls to be interviewed about the audit. You may have already been called. I know they're starting to do that work, so just be ready. On the KRT, we've had an exciting meeting with our group. Couple of things, we're getting some. Appraisal work done on the short section of where the corridor currently ends up to Smith Road. The idea is that that section would be a great addition to get people right to Weaver Park. We've planned with the city a mid-block crossing that would give people direct access into Weaver Park. So that that was very encouraging to see us move along. Obviously, we're working with the rail company Norfolk Southern. Just because we're excited doesn't necessarily mean they're excited and would speed up any of their work, but that was really what came out of our Urbana meeting when they came. Back in the spring and we had a group meeting. They said, you know, get an appraisal, get it to us as soon as you can and we'll entertain any serious offer. So we're hoping that we can follow through and keep their attention. Likewise, I think through different reports, you may know, we've talked about maybe starting a friends group. I know the Forest Preserve would lead that effort. But we really want to be involved because there's a lot of opportunities right here at Weaver Park. You know, to get people that might want to help, so we had a very good discussion with our friends over in the Bloomington Normal Area. The Constitution Trail over there has had a very, very active, successful friends group. So we learned a lot from them and and will continue to pursue that, so we're really excited about that. Wanted to mention, we had the University of Illinois Arboretum Annual Meeting. A week ago, Joe DeLuce and I serve on that Advisory Committee. And it's really exciting to know there's four new gardens in the work, a couple are in in place. You may have seen under in Tom's mailbag, somebody asked about the soil pit. That's one of the new features out there where they're really trying to teach and educate people about our amazing soil here. The Drummer silt. Is, you know, world-class soils, so they have a really neat exhibit over there. If you haven't seen it, head over and check it out. And then probably what's more germane to us, obviously, we continue to encourage them to think about trails and connectivity. With that wonderful garden right here in Urbana and people able to, you know, use our bikeway systems to walk and ride. It's a great way to link, you know, Meadowbrook Park to some of our other parks in the arboretum. And I think they're very interested and open to that. It was also interesting to learn, you know, they're struggling like we do, both park districts with basic stuff of how do you provide adequate restrooms? Parking, information, access, you know, very basic things. So it's always not necessarily nice to hear, but it's at least reminds us that everyone is trying to do better and make customers welcome and. Their experience is pleasurable as as we can do. Obviously, having those basic services go a long way. Let's see, we have a. State Planning and Research Grant KRT meeting coming up. We'll learn a little more on the status of that. That's being organized by Regional Planning Commission. They're doing the work on that, so we have an update coming, be able to report in July. And then Kelsey wanted to remind everybody, we did some checking on annexations. We've had no annexations in this past year. The City of Urbana did approve an annexation agreement, but did not actually. Incorporate any land into the city. So we'll do our double checking as we do on that topic, but I wouldn't expect any any new annexations this next year. So all I had, but I can answer any questions about any of those or other other topics you might have questions on.
Yeah, what was the audit interview, Tim?
That's our annual audit that we do every year at the Park District. And they audit our books and then we do the whole. So they start early and usually the first steps are interviews.
And the auditor will usually call Tim and then they'll usually call one random commissioner that they just pick out of a hat.
Uh oh. Be ready.
Yep. Obviously, and I should add, it is an unusual year and. Before I even said it, the question was, I'm sure COVID situation is probably in currently impacted the district. Yes, and so we talked a little about that. Oh, one other item I while I still have the floor, I see my item there. We have a draft RFQ ready for the Health and Wellness Fundraising. Position that would be the project-focused potential hire to help us do some fundraising on that. So we do have a fast track with that. We're trying to get that work out and back. And proposed recommendation to our board at the July Board Meeting. So stay tuned for for that to come. And again, we're searching. There's no guarantee we'll find the right person, the right fit, have the appropriate resources, but we think it would be something that. Could really help that project reach its full potential and we'd like to give it a a good effort. We had a wonderful fundraising. A steering committee. We have a steering committee for that project of various people on the up deck, the foundation, the Park District. And the board. And I think everyone was very enthused, think that we could attract somebody and that would be very beneficial with our short timeline, you know, to try to try to raise awareness and raise as much money as we could to help help that project. So we'll stay tuned to the July meeting to see if any names come forward for recommendation. I'm actually done.
Okay, any any further questions for Tim? Hearing none, move on to the President's Report. Coming meetings, normally we don't have a study session in July and. Not aware that we are going to have one and then the fourteenth of July. Which is. Bastille Day. And guess who won't be there? That is won't be at Bastille Day.
Oh.
So. Hold a public hearing on combined budget appropriation ordinance and adopt and approve the budget. There'd be probably some bid approvals and missing from this list is everybody's favorite semi-annual review.
I was just going to question that.
Executive Session Minutes, so.
Oh, but it's. We are still planning on doing that. I haven't figured out how we're doing it with Zoom yet, but we are still planning on doing that, so I don't know if we'll just. Not let the people in the waiting room, you know, people will all be in the waiting room and we just won't let any of them in until the executive session's over or something like that, I think. We'll still.
Our executive session is allowed.
I believe so.
Yes.
All right, Michael and I were talking about that, so okay.
Yeah, and I it does beg the question of whether a Zoom meeting is sufficient. Yeah, and I uh it it does beg the question of whether a Zoom meeting is sufficiently secure um to. Feel that that we can do that, but uh that's something I guess we need to resolve before we actually have to try to to run one. Or we could get, or we could get wild and crazy and try to hold an an at-distance executive session where you have fewer number of people. You might be able to get a big enough room to hold one.
Yeah, especially just, especially if it was just for the executive session part. You know, if we just convened a meeting to have an executive session and then dispersed to have. The regular meeting, I think, you know, that's really only the five commissioners and I don't even come to that. It's usually Tim and Matt.
Yeah, but we have to social distance if you're referring to being inside, so.
I was, I was thinking that if we use the conference room at Kerr that we normally use, that each commissioner could just each have their own table all spread out around the room.
Or or we could, or we could, or we could be wild and crazy and do it outside.
I mean, alternatively.
Eavesdropping stuff.
You can always schedule two separate Zoom meetings, right? The executive session is a standalone meeting and then the board meeting is its own.
I like that even better.
Yeah, that works too. Yep. Yep.
Having had people just come into my personal meeting the other day because I used it twice, it was fine, but it was like, oh, right, that's how that works, but.
Good thoughts.
Um, moving on to liaison reports, uh the finance study group. Last met on the twenty ninth of May, and I think we've discussed most of those things by now and either the study session or or tonight. And uh we plan to meet again on the twenty sixth of June, so. Sir, anything from the UPD Policy Study Group?
No, we met in March and we will have a future meeting when it's relevant for us to look at policy again.
The Parks Foundation Representative Roger.
The foundation uh elected not to meet this month, so they'll be meeting next month.
And the UpDak Planning Study Group and.
We have a meeting on next Wednesday, June seventeenth, and we'll finalize the final topics for the rest of the year.
Alrighty, then we can move along to old business. And uh first item is to receive draft ordinance twenty twenty dash zero seven to adopt the fiscal year. Twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one combined budget appropriation order.
So I don't really have anything to add on that. Agenda item, just you guys have to receive it. We're required to post it publicly for thirty days prior to its approval. And which will be at the July regular meeting. Um, and so I always have the draft available and ready by this meeting and and provide it to the commissioners. Uh, I don't expect it to change at all, just like I said, because um normally I. There may be still changes between now and when it's finalized, but everything's changing. So. Like I said, we're using it more as an appropriations ordinance this year than anything, and we're going to be bringing you. Uh, more information on the actual budget and where we're seeing our projections and forecasts going in the coming months. So um. I also attended a webinar that IAPD put on about where they mentioned, you know. It was funny because we already do all the right things. They said, wait till July to approve your budget appropriation ordinance. Okay, we already do that, but some districts don't. Some approve it in April or or May, so um. You know, that way you can make, continue to make these changes as you need to, but. Uh, so it's in your hands. Uh, if you have any questions, you know, that's just the legal document that gets filed with the county. I'm happy to answer any questions. Now or any time this month before the approval. And come July, you'll receive the full budget book, so um. And we can uh go over the main sections of that book when the time comes.
And is it fair to say that that this document i- is rather based on a. Quote, normal, end quote year, so that we have the money appropriated should by some miracle we end up. Running a more normal fiscal year's operation.
Correct, yep. It's based on the work that staff did beginning in November.
But but we don't actually expect to hit some of these numbers.
Right, and you know, I would, I expect that where we aren't earning the revenue, we won't have the expenditures either. So that will make adjustments as we go.
Any questions for Katie on that document? Okay, then we can move along to action to approve the lease agreement with the Urbana Champagne Sanitary District. This is. Something that we saw somewhat a month ago.
Yes, la- last May, I think, uh or last month in May, we uh did a full presentation of the. Proposed lease agreement with the Urbana Champagne Sanitary District. Um, if you recall, we used to have separate leases and now we've rolled it into one lease. Um, I think we have all the attachments. Staff recommends that we would approve this. And we're very grateful that we are allowed to continue our really good working relationship with the sanitary district. Um, they've just been a terrific organization for us to work with, and I think the benefits um that are outlined in my cover memo. Really play toward the benefits of the whole community with the open space and and the sites that that we're able to access. Can I answer any questions about the proposed lease? And I should mention our legal counsel and the sanitaries both have looked at it and are recommending approval as well.
I move approval of the lease agreement with your banner champagne sanitary district.
Second. Oh, we're gonna say something, Meredith, I'm sorry.
Only to second your second.
Does that make it a fourth or a third?
So that has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or any questions on the matter? Yeah, hearing none, then we need to do a roll call vote again, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Lashonda?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I vote as I as well, so that carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We had no old business removed from the consent agenda, so we are now on to new business. Uh, reviewing the draft of district goals for fiscal fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one.
I call in the board backup staff attached the goals for the upcoming year in our new format. I think we had a little discussion a couple of times throughout the year. Um, there's no action required this evening. Our main intent was to get the new format in front of you. Certainly, we'll get a chance to go through in more detail next month as it's linked to the budget. Um, but if there's certainly anything that's missing or not clear, we we hope our new format is clear and it really meshes nicely with our. Strategic plan. We're getting our goals aligned. Um, you will notice there is, let me get to my section. On the back section, there is uh operational um excellence. And so there's a number of what I'd call goo- goals that don't necessarily find a home in one of our main headings, but they're still important to us. And many of them point to, you know, just being a good agency or best practices, things that are still important to us. Um, so please take a look at that. Let us know if you see, think anything's missing. We tried to cover all the the key things that are going on within the community and within the district. And then I should mention, there's additional goals coming from all the divisional groups as usual. Um, that'll be coming, they're still in progress, and that'll come with the information next month. But we wanted to get the main goals, what I call the board staff goals uh in front of you this evening.
Well, I certainly had a question on the you belong here set of goals. I mean, there there are a couple of headings. That don't have any. Action items or objectives, whatever the the right term is. I I'm just curious if those are coming or.
Yeah, those are covered much more in much more detail in the departmental goals.
Right.
So they just don't have a district-wide emphasis. And so like recreation for those couple of headings of the strategic plan goals, I mean, they have a. Four, five, six, seven goals underneath those. So I think once you have the comprehensive set of goals in front of you, you'll see that every goal really has. Uh, a direction, just kind of filters through all the different departments.
We also thought they were really critical goals while they're already, as Katie said, included in other areas. That they were really standouts that we thought district-wide, you know, speak volumes. Um, you know, if there, if it's necessary to have additional bullet points, we could break down more points, but I think again, I think the rec staff is. Included that kind of work in their their area. The same thing with the the other other two items listed in that section.
And and down at the bottom of the page, the the last bullet point under other goals looks to me to be the only one and on the whole page. That's related to employment. And um I'm wondering if there might not be. Needed some more goals or objectives relating to broadening our employment horizons in terms of you belong here.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we can work on that. Obviously, I see a relationship to the second goal at the top. Creating an environment where staff appreciate promotes diversity, inclusion. Obviously, you have to have the the hired staff, you know. I'm right, that's my linkage in my head to make that way to combine or work those those kind of things together.
I think we just have to make some things that might be implicit to you all explicit to us. I think that's often.
Well, and I think, to be honest, one of the reasons that we brought this goals document to you tonight was that it's not finalized yet, and we'd like your input if you. Are seeing areas that we can add, we'd we'd really like to add those goals in um with your direction.
I I agree with Mer- with what Meredith said in terms of making some things more explicit. One of the things that struck me about it in terms of language is that it seems to imply that we are. We are reaching out to serve um underserved people or underrepresented people. But we are not necessarily incorporating them in the us who is doing the reaching out. Does that make sense? And and I I I would like to see that made more explicit.
Roger, do you mean like enlisting in volunteer groups or new associated groups?
About across the board uh in in terms of the. Uh, I I'm thinking of the foundation in particular, which which isn't the 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 district. But but I I think in general, um, we need to be incorporating. People in the um in the in the outreach uh aspect, whether it's as volunteers or staff or or whatever.
Don't want to appear as othering.
Yes, yes, thank you. You youngsters have this good, you know, this 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 hip language, so.
That's all codgers.
I did have a question on one of the objectives from the. New goal, operational excellence, new goals, and it's analysis of new and existing technologies to assist in park. And facility management to conserve resources. And it mentions a couple of names. I mean, are these proprietary. Uh, software products that are under consideration to uh adapt. For the UPD, is that what's that's about?
Yes, FlexReg is a module of ActiveNet. Um, and we actually already use it, but it's very new to us this year. We just started using it and so. The goal is to really understand it better and how we can incorporate it um to make our registration process more efficient. Um, and then EPACT is a camper uh data collection software where instead of having paperwork. Uh, campers, their parents fill out everything electronically and then. Each camp leader has an iPad with all of their campers' critical information on it that they carry with them at all times. Um, and so uh we actually also purchased that, but we weren't able to implement it this year because of COVID, so. Uh, it's just kind of continuing those two processes out. So yes, those are both softwares that we're investing in currently.
And I I guess, I mean, this is sort of maybe what Michael and and Roger were getting to, but you know, as you look at the whole package. You belong here is is not as explicit and I think, and how are we measuring it? So the others are, the other areas, you have very defined actions or activities that are a goal that we can check, that we have completed this project. So how, so when we think about being more explicit about you belong here, and maybe there is a lot of repetition, I'm not. Between different areas, I mean, there should be, but like, how are we going to measure? If we coordinated efforts with Champagne Community Coalition Partners to reduce community violence, improve community health and wellness, et cetera. I I don't disagree that those are great goals, but what's the tangible outcome? What are we measuring to say that we have made? We know what success looks like in that space. So that's, I think, yeah, what are we going to do specifically to target that? So I think that's what would be helpful. Um, where the the rest of them have that, and I think that. That makes sense that they do because they're 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 areas of operation of the park district, right? So it makes sense that you have very well-defined placemaking with trails, et cetera, et cetera, so.
We can do that.
We appreciate your feedback.
So again, in terms of timing, we would expect a somewhat fuller version of these goals for for next month's meeting. Is that correct?
They go in the budget book. Yep, you'll see the, this is just the district-wide section, and then each department has its own. Section that follows, so um all of those goals are covered within the kind of complete document. It's just as a group, we usually only really review the district-wide section. Um, that tends to be where our focus is at the board level. Um, when we actually do our, you know, review semi-annually or whatever with the board. Um, and that's why we thought we'd bring that section to you tonight to get any other feedback before we finalize it.
I have a couple of questions. Um, one is. Has any, has there been any other interest within the district about the racial and inclusion training that the U of I is offering for free online? Um, and the other question that I have is about the timekeeping and attendance system that you currently have. Um, and what uh is it chronos or are you moving towards?
We don't have one. It's all me and Noel, no. We use, um, we use an online system for our part-time staff. But it's really just a clock in, clock out, and then we export it and we have to manually enter it into B S and A. It's not, uh, it it cannot be, it's not um compatible with the S and A to be able to be dropped in. So everything in our um payroll system now is hand keyed in for pay, so that's why we. We, it's one of our goals for several, the last several years to look into a timekeeping system, but. It just keeps getting delayed with the new accounting system getting implemented and this, that, and the other, so it's something I'd like to pick back up this year. What do you use at the county?
We use chronos.
Okay.
And how does it work? I mean, how well does it work?
It works pretty good. We're upgrading, so we're having another platform added and we also use Bamboo HR, so. We we have a couple of different ones. Bamboo HR is more internal that we use within our office.
Lashonda, on that other training, we we're not aware of all the area-wide trainings like that, but if people know about them or please let us know, we'd be very interested.
I know Janet has signed up for it, so I was just curious if others knew about it as well.
That's just what I was gonna say is I know Janet uh sent it out to um the rec staff team. So I'm not sure who's all signed up or who um may be signing up, but I do know it's been passed out through an email.
Okay, thanks.
I would add too, there's obviously with COVID and related related topics, there's been just a whole slew of, you know, online type of trainings. Staff are kind of breaking up into different groups to try to cover as many of them as we can, whether it's reopening or programming during this time or finances or. whether it's reopening or programming during this time or finances or lots of different topics.
Any other comments or questions relative to the goals?
I was just going to add, Michael, the reason I was asking, just, you know, with the chain of events that is, you know, taking place all over the country and just, you know, educating ourselves on the importance of, you know, again, aligning ourselves with the motto, you belong here and really delving deeper into some of those real life situation issues that, you know, no one is really comfortable in having that conversation. And so to represent that model even further is ensuring that, you know, we are educating ourselves with, you know, specific issues that, you know, every organization experiences across the board.
Well, I, I trust that will be looked into further by staff then. Although you've already got some people using or planning to sign up for it, is that right?
I'd say also, just so folks don't forget, you know, we've organized between the Park, Champagne Park District and the Forest Preserve, you know, the last couple of, I'd say racial bias, racial training. I think that's an initiative we sought out and really invited our coworkers to join us. So I think we anticipate doing that, you know, on a group, community-wide level, at least each year. There's a number of components that, at least particularly the last presenter had, and it basically starts with an introductory type topic, but there's a number of other, what I'd say, you know, digging deeper type of topics that we're very interested in. So that's kind of formal training in a large group. I think there's online opportunities. There's things that maybe our own district, you know, just UPD would want to do. And we'll take a look at those and see what's out there.
And if, any other questions or comments on the goals? All right, let's move on then to action on resolution 2020-06 to accept the coming fiscal year CUSR budget.
One of the things I want to add, I know Corky will mention a few things too. We had a very good board meeting with our CUSR folks this last month and it was really exciting to learn. You know, they're doing a lot of outreach right now as well. They're staying connected really well with their participants. Obviously, some of the families are very concerned and, you know, don't want anybody out or getting involved. But they're, they're still maintaining a good relationship with all of their participants that, you know, can be involved. They come up with a number of really fun, interesting things for the kids. The older adults also have some really fun and interesting things. So really for a very small staff group, they came up with some pretty interesting things and I really wanted to compliment them and their efforts.
I, I think the only thing I would add with that is even as we move into phase four, and you, you may be able to have more people, but social distancing is still going to be part of the equation. That's a lot more challenging for the special rec staff. And so they're being very creative with their programming now. And I think similarly to what we are looking at at the moment is moving into August or even late July, looking at, well, we're looking at doing things sooner than that from an activity handout type stuff with Urbana, but there's going to be a combination, I think, and for the next, I'd say through this whole fiscal year, looking at what types of programs can be virtual and having a combination of virtual and person type programming. Because we are going to have people who, even if they can get out and go, because it's, let's say there was a real miracle and it's phase five, people still aren't going to feel comfortable going out into some of the settings that may be there. So we're going to be, my staff and the special rec staff are working on how you can blend the in-person versus the virtual type programming. From a budget standpoint, there's really no big adjustments. It's going to be a budget similar to what we're in, where things are going to change drastically based on who, what we can offer and when we can start offering it. So there, there was no huge changes in, in the budget numbers. I'd also want to point out one other big thing that is happening with special rec this year is the, they're working on getting a, a different space. The bicentennial center, I believe, is what they're calling it now, the old, old Leonard Rec Center. They are in the process of, I believe they're in the bidding process now to get started on that work. Those, so they'll have their own, the shell of the facility itself is going to pretty much be as is. They're not doing a lot of major renovation indoors. They're working on their heating, cooling systems. They are working on a new gym floor. Right now it's concrete. And they're working on, yeah, heating, cooling, restrooms for ADA accessibility and, and changing spaces. But for the most part, they're getting the building back up to speed to where it's a more efficient and sustainable and can serve the purpose of having special rec there. Those funds, it's about, if I remember, the bids aren't complete yet, or we haven't had a report from the bid yet, but it's close to about $900,000 in renovation work. Some of the funding would come, I don't know if you guys remember, last year we did a, a reserve of, I think it was $45,000 for Phillips, where we, we had some re-reserve funds. At that same time, we approved that they, their percentage of the reserve funds, which is a much larger percentage, is, would be something that they could put into this renovation work. So that, that's exciting. That's getting ready to happen. I think their plan is to have it done and be able to start some programming there late December, January 21. So so that, that's the exciting part about that. Yeah, in a nutshell, there's, they're in the same position as us, as us. I would suggest, once we do get back into programming, similar to what we're going to be doing for you guys with our projections, I would suggest we bring them into a meeting to just go through those projections with us. I apologize, Jamil was going to be here and then last minute he could not make it, so.
Just to add to Corky's point, I think the new facility is really going to be a game changer. Having a home base, not having to compete with, you know, a completely different user group, which are, you know, the senior groups that'll, that'll remain at the Hays Center. So I think the growth potential to have really a dynamic building that really is recreation and fun oriented, I think will make a huge difference. I think the kind of events and activities that they can host, you know, will be great. And at the same time, we're still excited to know that they'll continue to go to all the other facilities that both park districts operate so that they're out and about and really taking advantage of what we have to offer, which is quite a bit. So the staff's very pleased. They're very excited. You know, it's been something we've worked for, for a long time. We've had a few reprieves, you know, when we were at Lincoln Square, they had their own freestanding space. So that was a kind of an era of itself and, and now moving on to this building, good adaptive reuse for that facility. So I think everyone probably is, is very pleased at where we are right now.
Well, I move to approve resolution 2020-06 to accept the FY 2020-21 CUSR budget.
Second.
Alrighty, that's been moved and seconded. And I did have a question before we actually take the vote. For the past several years, the restricted fund balance for ADA spending, you know, has been certainly over $50,000 a year and it's, in this budget, it's shown as $2,500. I'm just curious what exactly is behind that. Is, is some of that money being used for this new facility in Champagne or?
No, I looked it over. So that line is just our, our ADA money that we get. And they have it, they have it appropriated so that we can spend it all. That's why we don't actually even have necessarily our plan in place of exactly what we're spending it on, probably improvements, ADA accessibility improvements at Crystal Lake or Blair. But they just have that appropriated in their budget so that we can spend it. But if you look at the projected column on their budget, where it shows, I think it's like $56,000, that's how much we have remaining right now. And then, and then the new year will get added to it and then that $2,500 is the remaining at the end of the year if we were to spend it all. Cause they just have it budgeted for and appropriated that we would. If that makes sense.
Well, no, I'm completely confused.
Hold on. I want to make sure it's in front of me while we're talking about it. And I want you to understand it before you vote on it too. So, but I, I did want you to know that I had looked it all over. I know last year it was a little tricky because they didn't actually have the $45,000 in their budget. And if it wasn't in there, then we wouldn't have been allowed to ask for it. Can you tell me what page that's on again?
It's on page 80 in the handout.
Okay. Got it. Okay, so this is just the fund balances, which is what's left at the end of the year. So right now, the projected 2020 ending fund balance that was ended April 30th is $56,061. And that really is how much of our ADA money that, that the CPD is holding. When I compare it to my records of what we've given them versus what we've requested back. So they have $56,000. So then what will happen after that is we're going to be sending them another couple hundred thousand dollars, $220,000, $240,000. And then we're going, some of that goes into the operating and then some of it will wind up in this ADA fund. And then throughout the year, we're going to spend $130,000 or something on ADA projects plus this other 56 that they're still holding. And so somewhere else in the budget is the expenditure side of it. And when you take that expenditure side off, it'll wind up being this $2,500 at the end of the year. So I think it's way down at the bottom is. So they're going to receive contributions for our ADA account of something like $100,000 here. It's actually more, these numbers changed a tiny bit, but it wasn't enough to worry about. And then down on the expenditure side, if I can find it. It gets at the very bottom, but it might have been, oh, yep. No, that's the fund balance. Sorry. It might have been back up at the top. Yeah, that's the revenue line items. I'll find a, I'll find a. Okay, or not. So one of the expenditure line items in here somewhere is how much we get to spend.
I see.
UPD, yeah, it's, all right, $154,000.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Okay, so if you take the 56 and then add the 100 to it that we're giving them this year and then subtract this 154, that's how you get the 2,500. That's what's left. Okay.
Good question, Michael. I, I'm not sure I could have answered that like Katie did.
I'm not sure I answered it super well, but, but I looked it over and, and I knew it was correct. So I just.
I know it goes in and it comes back and we pay our fair share.
Andrea gets the UPD side of it from us. So I mean, I go in and make sure she has, so she actually used my original estimated levy numbers, but then when we got the final, I sent her the final extension and that didn't get in there, but it was only off by like maybe $5,000. So it wasn't enough to be concerned about changing, so.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. So we do have a motion before us. Are there any other questions or comments before we vote? Hearing that, let's do a roll call vote again, starting with Roger.
I.
Ashana.
Hi.
Meredith.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. So we have approved that resolution. And now we're moving on to action to approve preservation covenant for Liel Park.
Okay, can everyone hear me a little bit better through my phone?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, we did it. Only took three meetings and I figured it out. So I've been trying to keep the board updated here every board meeting since we ran into our issues at Liel Park last October. But during the excavation of that new parking lot area, grave marker fragments were uncovered and triggered state notification and an archaeological evaluation. Now, based upon the findings of the Public Service Archaeology Program's report and, which is attached in your board packet and the 10 potential burial locations at Liel, the state provided guidance based on what was the district's desire to leave those grave shafts undisturbed in the park site. So that state guidance included the approval of a revised design to reduce the footprint of the parking lot and avoid the tin features and to return the grave markers and rebury those stones as close as possible to that original location that they were found within that excavated parking area. And then finally, a preservation covenant is required to be filed with the deed of the property. And so that covenant is before you tonight for approval. And I'll, I'll note that it doesn't restrict the park district from doing any future improvements at the park. It's really serving to ensure that before we do any sort of ground disturbance on areas of the park that don't currently have a feature, an amenity, a planting bed or a tree that we will, as we've done now with Liel Parking Lot, engage in an archaeological review. So once that is filed and if approved tonight, we'll need to get signatures from Tim and Michael with the notary and then file that and send a copy to the state. And then we'll be able to recommence our work on a change order with the contractor and have construction return back to the site with that revised plan that's included in your packet. And so you can see in the plan as well, there's a new path that goes from the parking lot to to get to the cottage. And since that area doesn't currently have a landscaping bed or a sidewalk or anything, we'll have to do some additional archaeological review on that before that path gets constructed. And this is for the entirety of Liel Park. We did have to confirm that and the state let us know that. because there's uncertainty of where any features could be in the entire park site and this covenant will apply to the entirety of the park.
Andy, I might add that we represented the option of excavating the remains where the grave shafts were located. Then properly curating them if we wanted to maintain our current parking lot configuration, we went so far as to get an estimate to do that work. But in the end, we were able to redesign the parking lot and keep pretty much all the spaces we had in the original design and keep the graves in place. And we felt like that was a better approach. All that is to say that if later we feel like we need to expand that parking lot further to the east, we could work with the state to do just that. Similarly, with the new path that has yet to be investigated, if we encounter remains, that will be an option there. I think we'd rather look at alternate layouts for that connector path, but hopefully making it accessible will be, will be important. So we're not entirely through, through this, this particular project yet. Long term, we want to look at the entire park site and develop an updated master plan. We still want to have better connectivity with the widened play use path that IDOT is doing. And we have a previous design that reflects that. We think some lighting upgrades are needed as well. And what we propose is, once we have that stated master plan developed, we get some costs that we estimate and put in our total capital project plan so that that could be done in a, in a, in a batch with appropriate archaeological investigation down the road.
Are we ever going to get a contractor to bid on a Lille Park project again?
Probably not this contractor.
We, we, we would want to do the archaeological investigation beforehand. Yeah, clear.
I did want to mention and thank planning staff. They've done a terrific job. It's been a very frustrating project. You know, we've done projects, I've done projects over the years at Lille Park. You know, whether we should have been doing it this way or not, you know, it came to our attention now and I think through their very careful analysis, working with people, taking each step, looking at all the alternatives and options really got us to a better place. Very supportive of this, you know, we could certainly bundle projects and, you know, it's, it's probably in a very appropriate measure to take, given the past use of the site, albeit not well documented and very clear and laid out before us. But where we are today and if we're able to finish and, you know, meet those objectives, I think, I think we'll have a very, very functional site. And I think the good news, other than, you know, the things Derek mentioned, there are probably no large planned, you know, development projects at that park due to its size and just, you know, what's already there. It's a little ironic, we did have it listed as one of the sites of consideration for the proposed health and wellness facility. I should underscore due to its location on University Avenue, not the site history or any of the build, constructability factors. But obviously going forward, it's clear to us and I think we'll be able to maneuver through this.
Have you ever thought about changing the name of the park? You know, the only reason why it's named Lille Park is supposedly Thomas Lille took care of all the bodies. He knew where all the bodies were buried.
Right.
And he, you know, he got the ball, puts, anyway.
Good, good question. We'll ponder that.
Yeah.
Oh, is anybody prepared to move that we approve the preservation covenant?
I, I move that we approve the preservation covenant and move file with the deed to the property.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, again, a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Ashana?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I vote affirmatively as well and that passes unanimously. That takes us to item D, action to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the sanitary district for the Crystal Lake Park Interceptor Crossing.
We had discussions early in our rehab design process to incorporate some improvements to the sanitary bridge crossing over the lake and Crystal Lake Park. Jake Wolf, who serves on our engineering team for our rehab project, is the go-to structural engineer for the sanitary district as well. So we included a bid item to be funded by the sanitary district to incorporate replacement of the existing walking surface and installation of rock along the bridge abutments. And that is keeping a consistent look with the other bridges in the park and what we have included in the overall lake rehab project. And the sanitary district is more than happy to, to be able to do those improvements. Additionally, an IGA was drafted to fund those specific bridge improvements and then any future change orders that are associated with any of the project costs for the downstream interceptor manholes. And those are the, there's two concrete pads, manhole on each square that's along the saline below Cannonball Hills. And then they're going to work additionally to do an upcoming change order to remove and replace the cover of the vault at the end of the sanitary bridge itself. And then allow for Jake, their structural engineer, to inspect within that vault while Stark has the the concrete lifted. And then they'll do a replacement of a new bolted down manhole cover to install at that bridge. So then in the future, the sanitary district would be able to get access to it for any sort of inspections and repairs, which they're not able to do so at the moment. And so we have the IGA documents, a couple exhibits included tonight. And both of our district legal representatives and our staff have reviewed and approved the document. The sanitary district board approved it at their meeting, I believe it was last Tuesday. And unless there's any further questions on that, I'd be happy to answer. That's all I have.
And they did approve it with all pages included?
Correct. I think there was a scanning issue from when they sent us back the document.
All right, then I move we approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District for improvements to the sewer interceptor crossing located at Crystal Lake Park.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions on the point? Hearing none, again, a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Ashana?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well. And I'm very pleased to see this approved as somebody who walks over that bridge with some frequency. The modifications are much needed. A lot more pleasant place to walk. Moving now on to action to award design services for the Blair Park, Blair Park AusLad Development Project.
So we have the proposal tonight from Upland Design, including ERA as their project partner for design services for that AusLad Blair Park project that was recently awarded. The project features amenities associated with eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars as a total project estimate funded with four-hundred thousand dollars from the AusLad grant itself. And just as a reminder, if you can look to the exhibit, the project includes eight-foot connector path on the north and west park perimeter to the existing sidewalks that would create a loop path system. And then a six-foot wide internal connector path, a new playground, challenge course, half-court basketball, picnic grove with accessibility improvements, accessible horseshoe pits, T-ball accessibility improvements at the southeastern corner. And then the electronic soccer tennis game wall, which is called the SUTU wall, which is that kind of technology incorporated recreational amenity that's supposed to help, one of our project goals, to gear some improvements towards teen demographic.
Andy, what does, no striping?
Because typically you could stripe it to where you're, it's like a play court itself. So that you would put a box around it or you could put it like it looks like there's a soccer goal in front of the wall itself. So it looks like it's a goal or you could do some sort of tennis marking. We don't want to incorporate any of that marking because it would kind of clutter up the tennis court itself. So it's really just the wall and the light-up panels on that wall that'll be used.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, good question. So Upland Design, that was the group that we worked with for the preliminary site planning and our master planning process for the park. Will be serving as the lead for the development of construction plans. And ERA will be serving as a role for more of the survey, grading, drainage, electrical and erosion control. And ERA will lead in permitting and construction administration. And then both groups will assist with bidding. And so getting into the budget, Upland and ERA proposed that not to exceed cost of eighty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. And we recommend including fifteen percent contingency. And that brings the amount of contingency to twelve thousand, two hundred and forty for total expenses of ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. And we'll utilize fifty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars in grant funds with the remainder coming from two thousand and twenty capital improvement budget that was earmarked for use for this Blair project. Going into timeline, we hope to have this project bid in early two thousand and twenty-one. And construction beginning in the spring of that year. And then the award tonight is actually to award the services pending the receipt of the final state grant agreement. We've been anticipating receiving that document for a couple of weeks now and we've been told it should be here any day. We didn't want to kind of put ourselves in a situation where we have a board meeting tonight and the proposal prepared and wouldn't, and then maybe receive the document tomorrow and have to wait for another board meeting. So this is a way that, you know, we could have the information in front of you all to review and approve. And then once we receive those final executed grant documents, then we would work to get this proposal executed and signature from Michael.
What arrangements have we made with the city or whoever we need to, to improve the handicap parking along here every, is that, should that be part?
I, I reached out.
Go ahead.
I reached out Nancy and talked with Carol Mitten, asked if we could do that. That's something they can work with us both on Broadway and Biden Street to make accessible parking. One of the suggestions we had to, either a couple of spaces or at least we'd like to see enough space ideally for the CU Special Rec short bus. They came over, there might be an easy access. Going back to that conversation, you know, years ago, I think nineteen ninety-three, we did the restroom improvements and made it accessible at that time. We weren't really sure what the future of the shelter was going to be. I think all along thought maybe it would ultimately be replaced. So we didn't really look at anything clear back at that time. Certainly now that we're doing major renovation, makes a lot of sense. So I think Kara, Dudak's already working with city staff in going through that process. I'm not sure it'll have to go to traffic commission. It might, Carol said they could expedite that, given what it was needed for.
Okay, and is it more likely to be on Broadway or Vine?
Both. I, it's, it's needed on both sides for the baseball and for the shelter.
Gotcha. Okay.
Asking for both side of accessible parking.
Yeah.
Obviously, we'll work with the city. We don't know the final details yet, but it seemed like it was very workable.
Right, yeah, yeah. And I think especially since this was an up-deck suggestion, and I think it was a really good suggestion that we need to, I just wanted to make sure we were, we were continuing on with our conversations.
Yeah, short of finding out there's some prohibition or reason why we couldn't, I would assume it could be worked out.
But it's not that we haven't, it's not that we've forgotten about it and have gone on.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's in the works and Kara's working on that right now to work with planning and ops on that.
Excellent.
We also notified ERA and Upland Design before they provided this proposal that that was what we wanted to include in their scope. So they put on working with us on that.
Super. I'm, I'm really glad to hear that.
Any other questions? Is someone prepared to make that motion?
Well, I got my paper right here if nobody's going to speak up. I move we award design services for the Blair Park AusLad Development Project for eighty-one thousand, six hundred dollars in a design contingency in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and forty dollars to Upland Designs Limited of Plainfield, Illinois, pending state executed grant contract.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, let's start a roll call then with Roger.
Aye.
Ashana?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I vote affirmative as well. So that passes unanimously. We had no new business removed from the consent agenda. So that brings us to Roman numeral ten, comments from commissioners. Any, any comments from the commissioners?
I have a quick question about the rentals at Anita Purvis Nature Center in May. The number of visits, just curious, was there any restricted guidelines for BUC Woods with the COVID-nineteen or? Just curious.
Where, on the, on their rec report, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
There was rentals? Like in the facility? Is that last May?
I don't know. I guess that's why I'm asking. I'm not quite sure.
The woods certainly are open for.
The woods, the woods are open, but I don't know about the, there should have been no rentals. We didn't have any rentals. I don't have the report in front of me right now, Ashana.
I know we put up some signs to make the boardwalk a one-way system. That was something we worked on with public health. So people would be limited to having to be within, you know, six-foot contact with each other. I also recall that Judy did some pop-up programs and some, some kind of Zoom tech programs about BUC Woods and the wildflowers. So those were things I recall taking place in BUC Woods. But as far as a rental goes, yeah, I'm, I'm not entirely sure.
There were no rentals, so.
Well, it says BUC Woods, so I'm just assuming the title would just, I don't know.
Yeah, the thing, the heading is misleading. It's just environmental programs and Anita Purvis Nature Center.
Yeah, I see.
So it's just, usually they would have a multiple bullet points there about all of the different data of, you know, facility visits and this, that, and the other. And this is all that there is.
Yeah, kind of their traditional heading where they would fill in those numbers.
Yeah.
And Katie, there weren't.
You're right, it is a little misleading.
And there weren't actually any environmental programs.
Right.
Just, just virtual.
Yeah. Yeah.
How are we, how are we measuring visits? Our staff there?
We have a people counter.
Their counter?
Yeah.
And then I guess one of my questions, something that keeps coming up is that it's impossible to social distance at Meadowbrook. I guess I'm just, I just hear this from neighborhood chat boards. I have myself not been out there, so I can't attest to it. But I'm just curious how we feel about that. Are there one-way signs at Meadowbrook?
No, we talked about that. That was something we didn't think we could enforce. You know, there's, you know, I mean, frankly, we're a little reluctant. People are aggressive when you approach them. So we need to have staff safety first. You know, we tell them, we put signs up, we encourage, we've talked about, you know, do we need ambassadors in the park, out walking, just talking to people, but kind of that concern, you know, many people aren't wearing masks. So we don't really have an answer for that. We know it's happening in other places too. People are, you know, I asked Joe DeLuce, hey, are you guys having challenges at Hessel? Yes, people are all over, walking closely. They want to engage with the public, but you know, how do you do it? You can ask and quest model, I guess, but I don't know if you can restrict or enforce, you know, short of really putting some sort of enforcement out at the site. So what we're continuing to message is, hey folks, we have other parks. Crystal Lake Park's a wonderful place to walk. There's a big nice road you could walk along the edge or some trails, soft trails, Ambucks Park. You know, there's a number of other locations. So I think Mark was going to try to, over the summer, highlight some of those other walking places, just to let people know, you know, Weaver Park's a terrific place to walk, some nice soft trails. We are limited in all the paved areas. You know, we don't have, every park doesn't have a paved network. And maybe nor should it, but it's an issue. We keep reminding people, the callers and people that call in, you know, we're sympathetic and encouraging, but we're still looking for new ways, looking at other groups that might have found a way to get that message across. You know, I think we're still experiencing people on playgrounds occasionally, you know, people on ball fields. When we hear about it, we address it and try to get right on it. It's, it is frustrating because it's very simple and we think people would, out of courtesy for one another, would easily be willing to do that.
Three, three comment about walking at Meadowbrook. And one is, time of day makes all the difference in the world. It's, there's a community of early walkers that pretty much respect social distancing quite well. They've had some help with that. There are certain people who are what I would call enforcers. And I'm married to one. And so, you know, that, 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 that happens. We don't wear masks and I, the sign doesn't, doesn't require that. So we have not been wearing masks. We did when, when we thought I had COVID. Well, not when I thought, but, but when I was tested for COVID, but was negative. But the, the, the third thing that I would say about the signs is that if, if they specified that people should go in single file, that would be helpful. Because people understand they're supposed to keep six feet, but they have no idea how far that is. I literally have thought about carrying a six-foot stick with me and just whacking people. But that probably is not appropriate for a commissioner to do. So.
Well, not without a mask.
Well, yes, I have my mask on.
Badge, you need that badge that you used to have.
Oh, yeah.
My police badge, Roger.
Yeah, there you go. But I, I do think, and I know you've already got signs and everything, but, but that's the one thing. I think people are really oblivious to what the distance is. And if you're on that path, yes, it's 10 feet across, but you have to go single file to maintain social distance. This is just my thought. But it's too crowded. And if you get past about 7:30, it, it, it's tough.
Again, we continue to mention, not as an excuse, but you know, it is a little confusing. People, couples, families that quarantine together assume they can walk together. I see people holding hands, walking and it would be challenging to tell them they need to walk single file if they're legitimately correct.
It's really not challenging. And they, and they generally do it, but you have to be right there. So, yeah, I, and I understand that, Tim. And, and you know, the hardest thing in the world is you've got a young couple, obviously in love. Probably not, you know, they haven't been, they haven't been a couple for very long. And they're gazing lovingly into each other's eye and you say, single file! And they don't get it.
That's when you need your stick.
Well, I should add, just quickly, you know, there's a lot of things staff want to happen and make happen. And we encourage and we do it the right way and we model the right behavior. But when people in our community won't follow the rules and ignore it and work against it, it just makes it very difficult for the staff that's left to try to, so you know, that's the situation we live daily. And if we could really make it the way we'd like, we wouldn't have any problems anywhere, trust me. But we have a limited role and we can only encourage and force report. So it's kind of an honor system and we hope people really honor each other's health.
Yeah. Tim, didn't I, did I see, I thought I saw a baseball game out by Williams.
Yeah, Prairie. Yes, we were notified. There were about, the note I got, there was somebody counted 30, 31 or 33 people playing on the court.
Yeah.
On the field.
There were lots of cars.
So again, they're closed, you know, we're sort of barricading and taking fences down and, you know. So we jump on it when we hear it, you know, we get right on it. But I've experienced, Nancy, it often seems to be on a weekend when there's less staff around, people are out. So you might hear it after the fact and then people are gone. So it's, again, it's a moving target.
Yeah.
You know, could we go out and, you know, could any charges be placed on anybody?
No, I don't, I don't think, yeah, that's not our job.
Right. So we just try to remind, if we would encounter, we politely say, hey folks, you know, it's, we don't, we can't do that. We're not able to have you do that. Maybe offer an alternative, you know.
Go home.
Well, break up into small groups, spread out in an open field. You know, you could still do many of those activities.
That's good.
The other question I have, I guess, is, you know, people are obviously anxious to get out and do things. I'm curious what, and, and we've canceled our programming through July 31st. I'm curious to know what conversations we might or might not be having yet with the school district. Because it, I don't think, I mean, Illinois has not launched their plan, but if it's anything at all Indiana has. And so you can, you know, in form of ideas that are circulating, which do not look like full-time school. It looks like potentially certain days of the week. I don't know. I mean, I'm just speculating here. And the U of I itself, we keep pushing back. The only thing that is known is there will be online courses in anything that's above, a class above of size 50. But there will be some in-person opportunities. So I guess, I don't know, I just foresee this, you know, if we are in phase five by, by July, are there, are we thinking about ways to provide, I don't know, additional programming? Are talking to the school district on what that might look like?
Well, to tell you about the discussion with staff, we just had one on Monday about, we started talking, our budget talk for June for projections. Started talking about that idea that I was telling you about virtual slash in-person programming. I've heard a little bit, because I'm on the Fisher School Board, I've heard a little bit about, just like you're talking, whether could go to school two days a week, do two days virtual, I don't know, we'll see how all that rolls out. But yes, that was exactly what we were talking about is being able to provide. Because being a parent and being through some of that e-learning, I know that it's about two hours of e-learning and then what do you do with them the rest of the day? And so, yes, we are thinking about that. I mean, I think it's, not that we, Tim has meetings with Dr. Tatum all the time. But the superintendents don't know yet either. So we're just planning that it could be a possibility and coming up with lots of program ideas from both the virtual and in-person perspective.
I was going to add, Jennifer wasn't able to join our last month's meeting with Carol and I. But that was the question we wanted to know is, you know, do you know, or when, when do you think you might know? How should we all work together? So we'll, we'll pick it up in July and see, sorry, in June, this month, and see if there's any updates on that. It simply could be, maybe they don't know, as Corky suggested.
Any other commissioner comments or questions? Well, hearing none, I think we have exhausted our agenda and I will declare us adjourned.